On yourself, I think.
Good evening.
Oh, we're not on air yet.
Good evening. Welcome to the August 24th Flagler County Planning and Development Board Meeting. We'll go ahead and start with the roll call.
Anthony Lombardo.
Present.
Ron Long.
Present.
Timothy Connor.
Present.
Dan Wilcox.
Present.
We do have a full quorum.
Let's go ahead and stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Next up on the agenda is to approve the minutes for the July 8th, 2025 meeting. I wasn't here at that meetings, but I did review them. Is there any discrepancies?
I didn't get minutes in my packet, so I didn't even know we had any for tonight. But I wasn't at that meeting either.
We have two that were here at this meeting or at that meeting. You weren't at the meeting either?
I am, I think I'm the only one that was at last.
But I was, I don't, I'm not aware of any discrepancies or arguments.
I'm cool with that.
The motion to approve the minutes?
I'll make a motion to approve meeting minutes.
Second. All right, motion carries.
Adam, did you want a roll call on this? So it would be the preference if we could do a roll call vote tonight, so I'm going to call out after you've been motion in a second for the eyes and the nays.
Okay.
Okay. So Anthony Lombardo.
I approve.
Ron Long.
Approve.
Dan Wilcox.
Approve, second.
Yay.
Okay, thank you Timothy Connor.
Thank you. Okay, as we get going here, this meeting is a quasi judicial process. Audience should refrain from clapping, booing, shouts of approval or disapproval to avoid any potential legal ramification and possible overturning of the decision by the courts. A public hearing must be fair in three respects: form, substance, and appearance. We will have time limits for the applications. Staff will give a 10-minute presentation. Applicants will have a 15-minute presentation. Public comment will be three minutes per speaker, five minutes if the speaker on behalf of a group. Then the applicants will have the opportunity for rebuttal and closing staff comments for another 10 minutes each. We will now move to our first application, which is a request for a variance in the manufactured home rural mobile home district. This is a quasi judicial application and it does require ex parte communication. Has anyone had any discussions with anybody?
No.
And this is a continuance of the July 8th Planning and Development Board regular meeting. All right, if we don't have any discussion there, we'll go ahead and pass along to staff for their presentation. Ms. Long.
Good evening. Simone Kenny, planner. This project was continued from the July 8th, 2025 meeting with the board requesting a site plan drawn to scale to determine the minimum relief necessary. To recap, this project is located up in the hammock off of Shady Lane. It's zoned MH1 and abuts conservation land to the rear. The requested variance is to place a shed within the rear and right side setbacks. The applicant had provided two revised site plans. The one on the left shows a three-foot setback from the side and rear property lines, and the right site plan shows a five-foot setback from the rear and side property lines. With the three-foot setback, there would be a four-foot and two-inch separation between the shed and the proposed deck. And then with the five-foot setbacks, there would be a two-foot, two-inch separation between the deck and the proposed shed. Again, going over the pertinent information, the property is about 5,000 square feet. It's lot five of the Magnolia Manor, Unit 2 subdivision. It is an undersized lot of record. The specific requests are for a seven-foot north yard setback variance from the minimum required 10-foot rear setback and a 10-foot right east side variance from the minimum required 15-foot side yard setback, as well as a 10% lot coverage variance to exceed the maximum allowed 30% lot coverage in the MH1 district. Again, this is a before-the-fact variance request and no comments or objections have been received. So your options as the board are to find that all the variance criteria that were discussed at the last meeting have been met and therefore approve Project 2025050046 for a seven-foot north yard setback variance from the minimum required 10-foot rear setback and a 12-foot right side east yard setback from the minimum required 15-foot side yard setback and a 10% lot coverage variance to exceed the maximum allowed 30% lot coverage in the MH1 district. Or you can find that all the variance criteria have not been met and therefore deny the project. Or you have one more opportunity to determine that more information is needed and to continue the request to a time and date certain. If there is a decision on a denial, we would request that you call out the specific criteria not met. And with that, I will close out and submit my report for the record. And if I understand correctly, I believe the applicant from last month's meeting wasn't able to make it, but I believe he has a representative here today to answer any questions.
Thank you, Ms. Kennedy. Does the board have any questions for staff before we open it up for the applicant? No questions. If the applicant would like to step up. Please state your name.
John Minnaberry.
An address, please.
Second.
And an address, please.
My business address or do you want my?
Just a name and area.
20 Sandalwood Lane.
Perfect, thank you.
Okay, so I am standing here for Jeff Prosser. He's the gentleman that's looking for the variance. I am a local contractor and he's asked if I can help him with this project once he figures out exactly what he can and can't do. I think the biggest thing on the shed that he shared with me was that there's an existing shed that is there currently and the way that he's understanding it, he's allowed to leave that there and maintain it, but it's in such bad shape, he'd really like to redo it if he's going to put a new structure on the property. He did say that out of the two things, that's his least, the least of his concerns, the biggest one that he was hoping for, excuse me, was going from the 30% to 40%. I believe it's the roof coverage is the way he interprets it and the way he explained it to me. So basically, you're going on a lot that size from a 1,500 square foot roofed structure to a 2,000 square foot roof structure potentially. He doesn't even need all of that, but by the time he's designed his home with his garage and the rear porch, it's pushing him over, so he was hoping to get that variance.
So do I understand that the, this particular location, the way that you've got the site plan laid out, is designed in part to save the oak trees that are on the property?
Sir, I can't answer that. I do not know that answer.
Okay.
Given that it's such a small lot, I gotta believe that if you're going to put a structure of that size, there can't be a way you're saving too many of them or you're not going to be able to get any equipment to do construction. So again, I don't know where those oak trees are. I haven't seen the site plan with specific locations, but if they're anywhere near the sides or in that building footprint at all, there's no way. If they were towards the front setback in that front 25, it's potential. And in the rear, obviously, if you know even a 10-foot setback, it'd be very difficult.
This new shed, that's the, is that the same size footprint as the current shed that's there?
That's the way that he told me that, yes, sir.
Okay, all right. And the, this looks to be a patio. That's a covered patio, correct?
He's, well, obviously, if he doesn't get the variance, it cannot be a covered patio. So that is really at the crux of what he's trying to accomplish.
Okay, okay. Any other questions for the applicant?
I think he, if I may, I think he does feel that, and obviously, it's his opinion. If you've ever been to that area, it's, it's an area that could definitely use some, some cleaning up and some new structures, and he would like to do that. And this is something that would allow him to move his family in and have the space that they need to live. And he was surely hoping to get that, that deck covered as well.
Thank you very much.
I have a question for staff real quick.
Okay.
The, so the variance he's asking for, for I guess cover, covenants of the property, does this patio having a roof on it or not having a roof on it, is that what triggers him into needing the variance?
Okay.
So that just, just the slab footprint doesn't affect it. Once we put a roof over it, that's when it asks for the variance.
Gotcha, thank you. We'll go ahead and open it up to public comment. If anyone has comments for the application, please step up. Seeing that there's no public comment, do we have a motion from the board?
I do make a motion to approve, but before I do that, or in conjunction with that, I want to get clarification on that question that I asked the applicant. So I thought I read in the backup materials that the location here was the best location available in order to save trees and not have to relocate the septic tank. Is that not correct?
From what I can remember about speaking with the applicant is that, and I can't recall specifically myself exactly where the trees are in that rear setback, but placing the shed in the existing footprint where the current shed is would greatly reduce the need to remove any other trees.
We have, we have the applicant back up here, and you will have to state your name again.
I'm sorry.
But he might be able to answer.
John Minnaberry. Do you need the address again?
Yeah, just.
20 Sandalwood Lane. As far as the septic goes, I have to believe, without seeing the age of that mobile home, but I believe it's got some age to it, the septic, the health department criteria has changed significantly. I seriously doubt we'd be able to reuse that same septic system. I'm sure that the drain field is going to have to be a little larger to meet the health codes.
Okay.
Yeah.
Can I make a motion to approve?
A second. All right, we have a motion and a second.
Roll call.
Roll call.
Ron Long.
I.
Dan Wilcox.
Yes.
Timothy Connor.
Yes.
And Anthony Lombardo.
Yes.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Application approved. Next up on the agenda, number five, also a quasi judicial disclosure. This one is for a request for a variance in the RC Limited Commercial District. Anyone have any communications that they'd like to disclose?
None.
Seeing that there's none, we will open it up for staff's presentation. Ms. Kennedy?
Quasi judicial, I don't know if we missed it?
Yes, we did.
No, we didn't.
It would also be the preference of staff if we swear on anybody who plans to testify on this item. So if there's anybody in the audience who thinks that they will speak on this item, would you please stand and raise your right hand? Do you swear that the testimony you are going to give today is the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth? So help you God. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Ms. Kennedy, go for it.
All right. This project was also continued from the July 8th meeting with the board requesting more information as to the necessity of the size of the pump house to house the pump equipment that had been discussed. To recap, this project is located off of A1A on Pelican Lane. It is owned RC Residential Limited Commercial. The request is for two new variances intended to supersede the February 11th, 2025 variance approval that imposed a condition that the pump house would be located within the Walden area of the pool and be limited to four feet in height. Here's the site plan from last month's presentation. Since then, the applicant has provided two YouTube links to the proposed pool equipment that was included in your packet, as well as two layouts of the pump equipment. And then I believe the applicant is here and can explain in more detail about the proposed layout. So again, recapping the pertinent information, the property is about 7,500 square feet. It is Lot 13 and the south eight feet of Lot 16 of the River Beach subdivision. It is an undersized lot of record. Planning and Development Board Order Number 5274 was approved at the February meeting, granted several variances for the pool and pool deck, subject to the condition that the pump house be within the Walden area of the pool and pool deck and with its height not to exceed four feet. Again, this had been appealed by the applicant, but the Board of County Commissioners unanimously voted to deny the appeal at the May 5th regular meeting. So again, the new request for the pump house is a 22.34 left west street side setback variance from the minimum required 25-foot street side setback, as well as a 1.2% lot coverage variance from the maximum allowed 35% lot coverage in the RC district. These would supersede the previously conditioned variance approval for the pump house, and the other variances for the pool and pool deck would remain valid. This is a before-the-fact request. Permitting has not begun yet, and there have been several written objections. Those that have been received prior to the publishing of the agenda had been included in the packet, and the comments we received afterwards have been forwarded directly to the board. So your options as the board are to find that all the variance criteria is listed have been met and therefore approve Project 2025050043 for a 22.34 left street side setback variance from the minimum required 25-foot street side setback and a 1.2% lot coverage variance from the maximum allowed 35% lot coverage for a pump house at 3 Pelican Lane. Or you can find that all the variance criteria is listed have not been met and therefore deny the project. Or you can determine one more time that more information is needed and continue the request to a time and date certain. If there is a decision on a denial, we would ask that you call out the specific criteria that's not met. And with that, I will close out, awaiting any questions or comments from the board.
Thank you very much. Does the board have any questions for staff? Being there's no questions, applicant, come on up and give us their presentation.
Raymond Royer, 3 Pelican Lane, Paintersville. Yeah, I was here for my last hearing, and it seemed like it was moving forward. This was the new request by two members that voted no. And I had two members that voted yes to move, to move forward. So the continuous meeting was requested to move it two months ahead. I'm trying to get this started by at least February, this project, to try to secure contractors and workers. So I talked to the complainant in the cul-de-sac yesterday because my wife said that they seemed to be here, and she was here with her husband. And I believe Dan, earlier in the meetings, asked me if I talked to my neighbors. Well, I tried to talk to my neighbors yesterday and they go too well. So they replied that, you know, they were having breakfast, and all I was requesting was to meet him and have his wife come over to my property so we can discuss it. And he says nothing has changed. And then he let me know that there was something with runoff. I tried to explain to him that it's been already settled by the attorney. County attorney said there's no issue with runoff. And he said something about George. When I talked to George, George didn't tell me he had a problem, but I just addressed it with Simone, and she said that he did write a letter. I never was aware that he wrote a letter, so I don't know where else to go with this. You've seen the pictures. I have additional pictures. I don't know why they weren't shown. I mean, I presented five other pictures. I tried to show these pictures when I was going in front of the commission. I was told that it was new evidence. I argued it wasn't new evidence. It was, it was visual of what I'm trying to build. But I couldn't show them, so I'm out. I'm trying to show them. Again, I don't know why all five weren't shown to give you a better visual. And I think it did change the votes of two board members, because earlier I was told I could put a Home Depot shed there or a Rubbermaid unit. And if you look what I'm building, it's matching my home. I said that from day one. It's matching my home. Somewhere along the line, we got in an argument with it was going to be 10 feet tall. I never said it was going to be 10 feet tall. I said the walls were going to be eight feet tall, and that the height of the peak of the roof is going to be 9'7". I had my second hearing, I call it the workshop, and Adam brought up again that I could go up to 12 feet. Well, I start laughing. He knew what I was laughing about, because, yeah, why am I here at a four-feet restriction? But I keep telling him I'm allowed to go 12 feet. I don't know. I don't know what the problem is. It's, it's pretty simple. I'm asking for a simple variance. And the wall, if I could go five feet on the wall, and you guys would approve it, I'd go five feet on the wall to give myself more privacy. That's why I like to have the structure out front, whether it's taller too, is because that's the main road coming in and out, and you get a lot of traffic through there. And I'm trying to keep a little privacy as much as possible. And then the rest of it is actually just one home back there. And they're part-timers. They're only here maybe two months out of the year, so they're not even full-time residents. So that's all I have to say.
Any questions for the applicant? Being that there's no questions for the applicant, we'll go ahead and open it up for public comment. Thank you.
There we go. Dan O'Connell, 7 Mockingbird Lane. At the July meeting, you requested Mr. Royer provide schematics and additional information on the pumps to justify the large size of the proposed pump house. As Mr. Royer stated, he provided a sketch and two YouTube video links. I took the initiative to view the YouTube video links and do some research on the Badoo Jet, Jet Scene Package D he proposes to use. This is the one with the two pumps and three jets. This photo, which has now gone away. That's the photo from the installation manual of these pumps. Very compact. I also spoke with the manufacturers. I also spoke with the manufacturer's customer service manager, and he confirmed via email to me that a four-foot pad and a four-foot height restriction is more than sufficient for the system. I submitted the email trail to the planning department so it could be included in tonight's public record. Clearly, the requested 96-square-foot, nine-and-a-half-foot-high structure pump house is not needed for pumps of that size. Such a large structure, so close to the property line, would block sightlines on both Mockingbird and Pelican. To quote Mr. Royer from the July meeting, "We have a lot of traffic on the main road, Pelican, and lots of people making U-turns." The house across the street from Three Pelican is a full-time vacation rental. You have a lot of families with children coming here on vacation. They're unfamiliar with the roads. The kids are excited to try to get to the beach. It would be tragic if a child is hit because of the poor sightlines created by this structure on Pelican and Mockingbird. The variances the board granted in the February meeting with a four-foot height restriction are sufficient for Mr. Royer to have a pool, all the pump equipment he needs. He can have his pool. He could have had it start in last February. I agree with the staff assessment that they shared in July. The large proposed pump house is a self-created hardship. I ask you to deny this request. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Come on up, state your name, please, and your address. Thank you.
I'm Jackie O'Connell, Eight Mockingbird Lane. This evening, I'm also speaking on behalf of homeowners, Mr. George Benoit, 14, 15, and 17 Pelican Lane, Ms. Teresa Lane and Ms. Sari Ayer of Six Cardinal Lane, and Ms. Nancy Walls of Seven Pelican Lane. Let me start with a quick reminder of the reasons for our neighborhood opposition. First, the obstruction of sightlines at the traffic and pedestrian intersection. The county has street side height requirements, restrictions of four feet for good reason. There's no reason to ignore those restrictions in this situation. In July, several of you weren't here, Mr. Royer acknowledged that there is a lot of traffic on Pelican. Second concern is the increased impact of storm and drainage runoff. Mr. Benoit has submitted photos of flooding at the end of Pelican and along his properties. The Cardinal House is next door to his properties, and they have the same issues. And the third issue is the very tiny setbacks from property lines that are horrible, horrible precedent for our neighborhood and its character. You probably remember that I've spoken before about we have restricted confidence, we have four-foot height restrictions. I know that you all don't regulate those, but I would hope that you would take those into consideration. So despite my three concerns that we've just mentioned, Mr. Royer has been granted very generous variances, more than sufficient for a pool and a pump house. Yet it's still not enough. Without showing any evidence of need or hardship, Mr. Royer wants a very tall pool house. As he said at the July meeting, the main purpose of the structure 90% of the time is to house pool equipment. Yet, 100% of the time, we will have impairment to the intersection from this very, very large structure protruding five-and-a-half feet over the fence line and almost directly opposite the entrance to our community. Mr. Royer stated that the only time the large size is needed is during hurricanes. I don't understand why Mr. Royer can't do what the rest of us do with our outdoor furniture. We bring it into our sunrooms or our garages or even into our house for 24 to 48 hours. That's Florida living. It's not a hardship. At 96 square feet and nine-and-a-half feet high, this size structure would essentially be considered a house addition, if that one of your colleagues actually called it an addition at the last meeting. I ask you, how often is a homeowner granted a variance to put an addition within two-and-a-half feet of the property line? I bet it's pretty rare. As to need, per the pump manufacturer, a pad and height of four feet is ample for the jets and the equipment that Mr. Royer has proposed. Thus, with the variance granted in February, Mr. Royer can certainly have a pool and a pump house. Any variances beyond this certainly far exceed a minimum variance requirement or a minimum relief requirement. Furthermore, have you heard, staff who have the most knowledge about this entire request have clearly stated that this is a self-created hardship by the applicant, and thereby myself and all the other residents I had mentioned at the beginning, ask you to deny this request.
Thank you. Would anyone else from the public like to come up and make comment? Being that there's no one from the public that wants to come up and make additional comments, would the applicant like to make a rebuttal?
Well, we just opened a whole can of worms for the neighborhood.
Go ahead and state your name, please.
Raymond Royer, Three Pelican Lane, Painters Hill. If you remember my early discussion, we're also working on the roads for drainage issues. You just mentioned, when you looked at that from a sky view, that some of the roads look like a private driveway. I've been working with the county, and it'd like to see a minimum of 20 feet for a roadway. Right now, her road is a 16-feet-wide roadway, not a legal standard roadway. We are planning, some neighbors are going to get together, we're going to start a check-in account, and we're going to move ahead, and we're going to make the main road a 23-foot wide. Now, it's going to be 22-feet-wide road with curbing. That'll give it to 23. And then the secondary roads, if they get on board, will be a 21, a 20-foot-wide roadway with curbing being 21. The curbing will help with moving the water properly. Talking about George's property, yes, he does have an issue down by the river. We also don't have proper drainage by the river, according to St. John. St. John would like to have us have a case spacing down there. So we're going to have to put some kind of storage system down there to catch the water to properly grab contaminants that might go into the river. We don't have that right now. So I don't want to go off subject because, Dan, I know you're pretty good at looking at hazards, and you talked about it at other meetings, and if you would do your triangle angular measurements, you would see there's no safety concerns. And by the way, coming out of her roadway, private driveway as it sits now, there is no stop sign for her. So the moving traffic that comes down there, if we get somebody that doesn't want to pay attention because there is no stop sign, could pull out, and we can have an accident. We can also have a child get hit. So yes, there's a lot of safety concerns, but my building structure is matching my home. It's made out of block for hurricane purposes. I was told I could put a Home Depot shed there or a Rubbermaid. I want to go to the extra mile because, and I'm putting a gable roof on it to match my roof. It's 9'7". I was told I can go 12. Our covenants restrictions is require four feet on the property line for fences. George was sued, the lawsuit was settled in 2009 because he put hedges on his property that blocked the view of the river of his property neighbor. That hedge was eight feet tall. It was litigated for three years. He lost. Those hedges are no longer there. That restriction is on the property line, not for a secondary building. Now, when I tried to talk to my neighbors about the garages that she mentioned, we do have two secondary garages. The one that's directly west of me would be one-third larger than I'm building now. The one that's actually behind her, facing west, would be one-fourth bigger than me. I asked her, "I don't hear you complaining about those secondary garages." In front of her property, the neighbor is present today. She built, well, she bought the home, but it's a three-story building that's built that blocked her view of the ocean. Don't hear a complaint about that, okay? So again, these were 24 lots for residential use. I'm here for hardship because these restrictions are for 9,000 square feet and above properties, and these restrictions hinder me to build, you know, all my property. So like I said, I have a picture, and I think they have a picture up here that would show use the, and again, this is a 3D version that I had, and it's pretty close to being graphic. I mean, they're pretty good with today's technology. And again, when we widen the road, just to let you know, when we widen the road to 21 feet, some of that's going to come into my easement. So when that is done, we will still have 15 feet from my wall to the edge of the road, 25 feet from my property pit to the center of the new road. This is this new road that's going to be put in there. All this planning is for the new road coming in within the next two, three years. So that's what those pictures are. So that's not actually a roadway now, but the new roadway is going to be there. And then I would eliminate her cul-de-sac. You just brought up about her cul-de-sac being illegal. It is illegal. It's, it's, it's never been put in there, and we have another illegal circle down by Cardinal. That's not a proper circle. You cannot turn a fire truck instantly to turn around. You just can't do it. So we're going to correct that. That's, I didn't want to bring up the other issues, but you know, this neighbor here seems like trying to tie everything on into this shed pool house that is going to be hindering and killing children and everything. I don't understand, but it's just a pump house. I gave you the drawing. There is a video that I presented that does show another slab with the pool system. And with the other pool, there's going to, because there's three pumps involved, you'll have the third pump that's going to be for your cleaning of the pool, you know, the regular pool system. And then that slab in the video, I don't know if she can show it here or not, but that system there is a slab, but that slab is not four feet. That slab is like eight feet by 10 feet slab that is showing the system in an open slab. I'm trying to build a structure to protect my system from saltwater, winds, you know, hail. I mean, the system alone for the, for the pool system is going to be almost $7,000 just for the pumps and everything, so, you know, it's going to be pretty expensive. That's about it.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Board discussion. Anyone have, anyone want to discuss?
We're talking about 12 by 8, right?
Yes.
That's three sheets of plywood. That's the width, 4'8" 12. That's pretty de minimis in my world, and I do have to go with what was said about views, sight triangles, the management perspective. I would suggest do not move with improving your roadways without going through the county. That would cause a lot of heartache and a lot of drainage issues and concerns. Just giving my perspective.
I do want to take this time to reaffirm that any roadway issues are unrelated to the variance request.
They're unrelated. Okay, so that's off the table. That's perfectly fine.
Can I highlight real quick?
Well, you're going to have to state your name again.
Raymond Royer, Three Pelican Lane, Painters Hill. Again, when I've been trying to work with the county, we came to the conclusion because we are a private community, we don't have to go through the county for roadways. It's a private community, and we're not an HOA. So that's why there's over 10 neighbors that are going to put our money together, and we're going to move forward because they did this project back in 17, they did this roadway, and they did it with road fines, and it didn't even last four years until it started crumbling. So we're trying to do it proper, blacktop, curbing, make it like our north neighbor is and our southern neighbor community is. We want to look like a community. That's just about it. Thank you.
Thank you. So just to reconfirm, I mean, the roads don't have anything to do with this variance, obviously.
Yep.
Just want to make that statement. Any other discussion? Do we have a motion?
I'd move to approve.
We have one motion to approve. Do we have a second? I'll second.
Sarah, can he second?
I think you have to turn over the gavel.
I'll have to turn.
Yeah.
I believe you do have to give the gavel for the second, and then they can return it back to you.
Okay. So we have a motion to approve?
Yes.
A motion to approve.
Do we have a second? And then?
You could choose to pass the gavel so that you could be the second, and then it'll pass back to you for the vote.
Who am I passing the gavel to?
Whoever would accept.
I'd like to pass the gavel.
Put that on the record.
Okay, I'll take the gavel then. I have the gavel now, so chair.
I'll second. Does he pass the gavel back to me?
He could if he would like to continue.
That's it.
Thank you very much. So we have, we have, so we're basically going to be split because obviously we have two. We have, we have two.
Well, I haven't heard anything that changes my mind from the initial decision. That decision was made some months ago. It went to the Board of County Commissioners on appeal, and they approved what we did by unanimous vote, as I understand it. I haven't heard anything that changes my mind on that. I think that the basis of that prior decision was that the law says that we're to make provisions for variance in the least effective way, that is, we give him what he needs in order to have a pump house, but no more. And that was a four-foot height limitation, according to our prior decision, and I've heard nothing that changes my mind on that. I'm sorry, I think the guy's got a nice house and he's got a nice plan, but he's also sitting on a sixth of an acre. It's not a big piece of land, and his plan doesn't work with putting a structure that tall in there, and a variance request should be limited to the minimum necessary to achieve the goal, and that's a four-foot size structure, not one that's nine or 10 feet.
I would respectfully disagree. I mean, just saying my statement, I don't think that the height restriction here is justified. I don't feel that from a view perspective, as far as what's been brought forward from sight triangle stuff is not adequate to, from my perspective, limit a vertical component. I just feel differently, brother.
Well, I go back to the same thing. If this is a variance for a pool house, the minimum variance requirement would be a maximum height of four feet. I looked at all the stuff that was sent in, both from the other resident, and there were some other attachments as well, the videos and stuff. I looked at the pumps, they, they're relatively the same size as most standard pumps. Granted, they have a larger input and output, and I think they have four-inch pipes on them instead of the standard one-and-a-halves or something of that nature. So the piping is a little bit larger, but I still saw nothing that would negate having to have a nine-foot building. And again, we're asking for a variance for a pool pump house and a deck, and the minimum variance necessary would be a four-foot height on it. So that's where I still land on it. So, I, that's, that's where I still land on it.
All right, so, the motion, we have a motion, we have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Well, we're going to do a roll call.
Oh, we're going to do the roll call.
Sorry. Uh, Ron Long?
No.
Dan Wilcox?
Yes.
Timothy Connor?
No.
Anthony Lombardo?
Yes.
Okay, we are two to two, so the motion has failed.
Where are you?
Excuse me? We could entertain another motion.
Maybe Mr. Collins had put a motion forward, I don't know.
What?
You want to add a modified motion or?
Well, that's up to you, as I understand it, and maybe we get clarification from staff. This request supersedes the prior request, which means that the prior approval has been withdrawn?
No, the prior variances for the pool and pool deck are reminding you that there's a, there was a side yard variance for the edge of the pool deck and a rear yard variance for the pool. Those will remain valid and intact.
Okay, but what I'm, what, what my question is, is I, I understand that the pool and the deck has been approved, as was, I think, the setback for the house and all of that, which we were in agreement with. But if we, if this is a superseding variance request, then that means that the prior approval with conditions on the pump house would have to be brought back before us. That is, our denial of the request that's in front of us, the superseding request, means that if we vote no, he doesn't get a pump house at all.
If you choose to deny this variance request, the pre-existing variance approval with the condition would remain valid as well.
So, we need to approve something in order for him to have a pump house of some sort.
No, he's.
That's real quick.
The pump house has already been approved.
Everything's approved, yeah.
So, this would have, if this would have been approved, that would have superseded the previous variance approval.
Okay, but it doesn't.
But in the absence of approval, that will stand.
Non-approval today just revives the old approval.
Correct.
Okay.
And he pretty much has approval to do just about this only restriction, being the four-foot height on the pump house. So, he can build this as it is, but it only can be about four feet high instead of the height that he's got. Okay.
So, even in, even in a deadlock, then he, he moves forward with his pool and pump house?
He can still construct the pool, and he can still do this. He has an approval currently.
Okay. All right. That was an interesting discussion.
So, where do we go from here?
We move on to the next item, don't we?
We're just moving on. All right.
Do we, do you need a decision? So, you're, again, your options as the board are to make a motion to approve, to make a motion to deny, or to make a motion to continue again.
Uh, I make a motion that we deny this variance, um, application.
I, I, I'm, I'm with Dan. I mean, unfortunately, and we're going, it's kind of just kicking it down the road again, but we're, we're in a situation where we, we have an even number of board members again.
Yeah, we need a fifth, we need a fifth over the break.
I'm fine with that as well.
So, I'll second the motion to deny.
Well, hang on, I'm going to, I'm going to pull that motion. I'm going to make a motion to make a continuance to the next meeting. Can I, I can do this, right, Adam? Yeah? We can do one more continuance to where we have a, a bigger board? Okay. Uh, I'm going to make a motion that we continue this to the next meeting so that we have a fuller board to address the matter.
Second.
All right, we have, we have a motion, and we have a second. All in favor, say aye.
Nope, we're going to do a roll call, sorry. Ron Long?
Aye.
Dan Wilcox?
Aye.
Timothy Connor?
Aye.
Anthony Lombardo?
Aye.
The motion does carry unanimously.
All right.
Quick question for staff. Is there a limit on the number of continu, is this the last continuance?
Just two, yes.
So.
I give Mr. Royer points for persistence.
I definitely do as well, as well, Mr. Royer.
We'll see you again real soon. All right. Next item on the list, next application, quasi-judicial as well. It's a request for a variance, um, in the R1 Rural Residential District. Does anyone have any, uh, ex parte communication with this application? All right, seeing that there's none, go ahead and open it up to staff for their.
So, this item number six, Project 2025050047, was requested to be continued to the September meeting by the applicant because public notice had already been completed. We're going to ask that you open it up just for public comment in case anybody came to the meeting.
Sorry about that. I skipped right over it because.
Got big red lettering over the top.
It's got big red letters going across it, so I just skipped. All right, so should I just totally rewind or just open?
I'd say just open it for public comment, yeah.
Open it up for public comment to step up? All right, if public comment has any, uh, comments in regards to application number six that has been moved to September's meeting, feel free to come on up and, uh, state your name, where you're from, and any comments that you might have. Anyone, anyone? All right, being that there's none, we'll move on. Being that there's none, we'll move on to application, uh, item number seven. Once again, quasi-judicial, uh, requiring ex parte, disclosure of any ex parte communication. This was a request for a variance in the R1 Rural Residential District. Does anyone have any ex parte communications they need to disclose?
None.
Being that there's none, we will open it up for staff. Ms. Kennedy?
Um, if we could have the secretary swear in, anybody here that's, uh, here to testify?
Um, if there's an applicant or anybody here to testify on this item, would you please stand and raise your right hand? Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give today is the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God?
Okay, this, uh, property is located off of Jana, John Anderson Highway and is located between Indian Mound Court and Bulow Creek. The zoning is split, R1 Rural Residential and Conservation, with that Conservation area abutting Bulow Creek. The zoning is R1 Rural Residential. The, uh, flood zones are split, uh, flood zone X up at the front of the property, and then having the floodway AE again on Bulow Creek. And then the soils are, uh, a mix of, uh, cocoa-bulow complex, orcino-fine sands, and turnbowl and pelisser soils. And it's a little tricky to see on here, um, but there is a little bit of wetlands at the rear of the property, again, abutting at Bulow Creek. Uh, the subject property is about 5.2 acres and is described as Lot 18 of Bulow Woods, Unit 3. Again, it's located between that cul-de-sac on Indian Mound Court and Bulow Creek. Uh, this request was triggered by a code case for unpermitted work for several landscape features along the front property line. As shown on the survey, the improvements include six columns that are 72 inches high and 24 by 24 inches wide, in addition to 11 landscape panels that are 68 inches high and 74 inches wide, as well as a gate across the driveway. Permits were issued for the concrete columns, uh, but, uh, the owners explained that they did not think the landscape panels qualified as a fence, as they do not provide security or privacy, and they didn't think they needed a permit. However, after the fact, staff, staff determined that a, a permit would be required. The issue is that our, our fence section, LEC Section 3.06.07, states that fences shall not exceed four feet in height within the front setback. Therefore, in order to obtain a permit for the 5.7-foot landscape panels, the owners need a 1.7-foot variance to exceed the maximum allowed fence height in the front setback. I believe in the technical staff report, I described the panels as being 6.2 feet, but upon clarification, the panels are 5.7 feet tall. Here's some, uh, photos provided by the applicant, so you can see what those landscape features look like, as well as the gate. And here you can see that the columns and the panels are located between three and six feet off of that front property line and approximately one and a half feet away from each other to allow wildlife to pass through. Uh, so again, to summarize, the property is about 5.2 acres. It's Lot 18 of Bulow Woods, Unit 3. Um, staff determined that the landscape features would need to be permitted as a fence. So, the specific request is for a 1.7-foot variance to exceed the maximum allowed fence height in the front setback. Uh, this is an after-the-fact variance request, but the applicants have, uh, obtained several signed affidavits from the other residents of Indian Mound Court, and we've also received several letters of support, all of which have been included in your packets. So, going over the variance criteria, uh, number one, asking for extraordinary and exceptional conditions. Staff determined that the subject property will not necessarily exceptional in size, is located between the cul-de-sac and Bulow Creek in the rural area, limiting roadway traffic and increases the prevalence of wildlife. Number two asks that such conditions were not created by the affirmative actions of the applicant, and that they have acted at all times in good faith. And based our, our discussions and given the misunderstanding as to whether the landscape features are or are not considered a fence and therefore required a permit, it is assumed that the applicants acted at all times in good faith. Uh, criteria three asks that the variance granted would not cause substantial detriment to the public health, welfare, safety, and morals of the community. Uh, the applicants, again, have received signed affidavits and letters of support from their neighbors on Indian Mound Court, and the variance would not cause, uh, substantial detriment. And then before asking the variance, uh, that no variance may be granted for a use of land or building that is not permitted. Fences and walls are permitted uses in all residential districts. And then finally, a variance granted shall be the minimum relief necessary, and staff determined the request of variance is the minimum relief necessary to alleviate the hardship and enable the applicants to obtain a permit. The only alternative would be to remove, uh, the landscape features or to cut them back down to the four feet. So, your options as the board are to find that all the variance criteria is listed have been met and therefore approve Project 2025060043 for a 1.7-foot fence height variance from the maximum allowed four-foot fence height. Or you could find that all the variance criteria is listed have not been met and therefore deny the project. Or you can determine that more information is needed and continue the request to a time and date certain. If there is a decision on a denial, we would ask that you call out the specific criteria not met. And with that, I will close out, awaiting any questions or comments from the board and submit my report for the record.
Thank you very much. Does the board have any questions for staff? Being that there's no questions for staff, would the applicant like to step up
Good evening, Rose Salenza. I am the applicant and also homeowner, 8 Indian Mound. We're respectfully submitting a variance request for improvements made to our residence at 8 Indian Mound. It was my fault. I did it. I didn't realize that it would be considered a fence, and I considered it a decorative panel after I looked at a gardening magazine. So, um, knowing that, uh, they were installed in good faith, not intended to be functioning as a fence. It doesn't keep anything in or out. Basically, everybody can see inside. The animals go past and through. It was basically just to, uh, allow the, which I love, the gardening to be seen and, uh, the grass and stuff to be seen a little bit more clearly because behind is all natural park, um, in our yard, which is five acres. Um, everything is spaced apart. It's non-contiguous. The design is purely for aesthetic landscaping purposes, which doesn't necessarily meet the definition of the fence by the, by the state definition. We could not find, after we received the notice, the definition by Flagler. So, we're still a little bit confused on why it's considered a fence because it doesn't keep anything in or out. Um, with that, our home is located over, uh, is located on over five acres in a rural cul-de-sac area. Our home is set back approximately 390 feet from the right-of-way. Uh, as mentioned, it is in a cul-de-sac, so very rarely we get traffic back there, or mostly it's just people that walk and our neighbors. The design is open, modern, and visually complimentary of the landscape without creating enclosures or restrictions. We're just respectfully asking that the county consider the fact that we did this in good faith, not to try to, uh, go against any code violation, didn't even know it was a code violation, and would be considered a fence. And I think that's all I had for you, other than I just wanted to mention, I wanted to thank my neighbors in advance. They all came to support, I believe, and I didn't ask for it, but they are all have been, we are blessed to have them as new neighbors. We're new to the neighborhood, so. All right, that is all I have. Thank you. Any questions for me?
Thank you very much. Any questions for the applicant?
You said the wildlife migrate through your, your not-so-secure fence, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay.
All the time. All right. Anything else?
No, thanks. Thank, thank you very much.
Thank you, gentlemen.
We'll open it up to public comment at this time.
Good evening. My name is Maria Regisi, and I live right across the street at 5 Indian Mound Court. I'm here to support, um, the beautiful, beautification of this property. I've lived in that cul-de-sac for over 18 years, and I can tell you, since our new neighbors moved in, it really has beautified our area. It's pleasant to look at, and it's wonderful to see those deer and the wildlife crossing over the, and through the fences. So, I'm here in support that you'll give them this variance and, um, let us move on. But it's a beautiful area, so that's my comment.
Good evening. My name is Tony Anderson. I live at 45 Bulow Woods Circle, which is on the other side of John Anderson. I came in support of these people too because I, I didn't think this was considered a fence. It's just, it just kind of breaks up things, but the deer come and go. I, I walk regularly in that area, and, you know, I'll often see the deer in their, on their property, and they just kind of scoot along, run around, whatever. But this couple has really done an amazing job to beautify the area. And I, I really hope that you grant them the variance because I, I never considered it a fence. I just thought it was these panels. They're staggered, you know, and there's quite a bit of distance in between each one. You know, they're from front and back and in between, so I hope you'll consider that. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public like to make comment?
My name's Elizabeth M. Brown. I live at 2 Indian Mound Court, and what they have done to our neighborhood is awesome. We have a walking neighborhood. There must be 50 or 60 people that walk every day. Every one of them, every one of them has admired what they did to beautify Indian Mound Court. That's.
Thank you.
My name is Donika Barisha. I lived 33 years on 7 Indian Mound Court, and I am very happy with the work this couple done. They just brought the beauty to our neighborhood. Everybody is happy. It does not bother us whatsoever. I sit and have my coffee, and I look deers going through. It's beautiful. And, uh, it's, everybody loves it. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Good evening, Melanie Thompson, 3402 John Anderson Highway. I do not live immediate with them. I'm about a quarter mile away, but I do walk the neighborhood. Living in my house 17 years, and I'm amazed at the upgrade that they've done on the cul-de-sac. It's beautiful. I'd like to do it at my house, but I'm right on John Anderson, and I'm sure you all wouldn't want to see that. But I'm just amazed of how much trouble they've been having to get this to go through. I'm all about getting rid of the I'm all about getting rid of the blight in our area, and code enforcement doesn't really care. But when these people make this effort and get their hands slapped and shut down, I just don't understand. So I really hope that you take this into consideration, and at least it's not garbage, but it looks pretty much good to me. So please let them have it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any more public comment? Being that there's none, we'll go ahead and close. Public comment, open up for board discussion.
This is my district. I'm pretty familiar with this property. I make a motion to approve.
We have one motion. Do we have a second?
I have a quick, I just want to quick. They had permitting for all of the pilings and the gate and all that stuff, correct?
The columns were issued a permit, yes.
Okay, okay. The second.
Good ask, good question. Is there a way to resolve this so that we can more clearly define what is a fence as opposed to a non-secure passage, whatever this is, landscape panels?
Yeah, that's something that would be addressed in our Land Development Code up right, improving the definition of the fence.
Okay. Just a thought.
Oh, yeah.
Good job. Looks good. Everybody's in concert.
All right, thank you. So we have a motion, a second, the secretary?
Ron Long.
Aye.
Dan Wilcox.
Aye.
Timothy Connor.
Aye.
Anthony Lombardo.
Aye.
The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you very much. All right, on to item number eight. This is also a quasi-judicial, requiring disclosure of any ex parte communication. It is a request for a variance in the RC Residential Limited Commercial Use District. Does anyone have any ex parte communication that they'd like to disclose for this application? None? Being that there's none, we'll go ahead and pass it on to staff for their presentation.
All right. The subject property is --
Simone. Would you like to swear people in?
Yes.
Okay. If we could have the applicant, anybody who plans to speak on this item, please stand and raise their right hand. One more. Oh, there he is. Okay. Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give today is the truth, the whole truth, nothing but the truth, so help you God? Thank you.
Thank you. The subject property is located out on the Barrier Island off of A1A and is adjacent to the beach. The zoning, or the future land use is mixed-use, low-intensity. The zoning is RC Residential Limited Commercial. It is in flood zone VE, and the soils are primarily Palm Beach gravelly sands. And there are no wetlands on the property. The subject property is about 8,719 square feet and is slightly regular in shape with a width of 67.45 feet at the front property line and a width of 60.8 feet at the rear property line. And then it has a depth of 141.09 feet along the left or the north property line and a depth of 138.34 feet along the right south property line. And then it's, again, it's described as Lot A of the Driftway Terrace subdivision. For some history, in 2013, the owners applied for and were granted a 0.7-foot variance to encroach into the left north setback for a separate building addition through the planning board, Order 2911. If you can see. Okay, I don't think you can see my mouse on the screen, but that's that upper-left corner that's encroaching into the left side setback, 0.7 feet. The applicant is now proposing another one-story addition to the front or the southwest of the dwelling. That's in the lower-right corner. The proposed addition would encroach into the seven-and-a-half-foot minimum required side setback by 2.38 feet. Similar to the 2013 variance, the primary justification is that the subject property is a parallelogram and that the existing dwelling was not built parallel to those lot lines, resulting in that encroachment of the corner. The purpose of the addition is to increase the bedroom size and add a second bathroom in the dwelling. Again, to summarize it, the property is just under 9,000 square feet, is Lot A and an undivided 1/17th interest of Trax X and Y Driftway Terrace subdivision. Again, bringing to your attention, that is the strip Y, is that four-foot strip to the north of the property intended to provide access to all the property owners of the Driftway Terrace subdivision. Planning and Development Board, Order Number 2911, granted a 0.7-foot variance on the northeast corner of the dwelling. And then I forgot to put it on the summary page, but the subject property is in an undersized lot of record, the minimum lot area in the RC District being 9,000 square feet. So the specific request is for a 2.38-foot side south yard setback variance from the minimum required seven-and-a-half-foot side yard setback. This is a before-the-fact variance request, and then several public comments have been received and have been included in the packet. So reading those variance criteria into the record, number one, the subject property is an undersized lot of record, and it is in regular in shape, being narrower at the rear of the property and having been plotted as a parallelogram. Number two, the subject property was plotted in 1967, prior to the adoption of the Land Development Code. The existing dwelling was built in its current orientation by previous owners, and the conditions were not created by the affirmative actions of the applicant. Number three, the variance would not cause substantial detriment to the public health, welfare, safety, and morals of the community, or impair the purpose and intent of this article. Number four, the variance does not allow for use of land or building that is not permitted by the Land Development Code. The construction of an addition to a single-family resident is a permitted use in the RC District. And then finally, the requested relief is the minimum variance necessary to alleviate the hardship and accommodate the addition. Your options as the board are to find that all the variance criteria as listed have been met and therefore approve Project 2025060069 for a 2.38-foot side south yard setback variance from the minimum required seven-and-a-half-foot side yard setback. Or you could determine that all the variance criteria as listed have not been met and therefore deny the project. Or you could determine that more information is needed and continue the request to a time and date certain. If there is a decision on a denial, we would ask that you call out the specific criteria not met. And with that, I will close out, awaiting any questions or comments from the board, and submit my report for the record.
Thank you. Does the board have any questions for staff? Being that there's no questions for staff, we'll call the applicant to give their presentation.
Good evening, board. My name is Joseph Pizzuli, architect, and I'm representing Ken and Lori Ashton. As you well know, many of you are familiar with this area, and there are a lot of these lots that are parallelograms. And as it was stated in 2013, we did receive a variance for the northeast corner of the building. It was over the setback line. In this case, we are expanding the existing floor plan. Right now, there are two bedrooms existing in that area. Maybe in your packet, next to the left of that on the page was the as-built floor plan, and there were two existing bedrooms. You can see the dotted line where it says new bedroom. The dotted line right above that is where the existing bedrooms ended. And my clients, they have eight grandchildren, and we wanted to expand the bedroom so that we could accommodate the parents and the kids in the room at the same time. And in doing so, because of the parallelogram and the fact that it's an undersized lot, we are here requesting a variance for that southwest corner, which is two feet four-and-a-half inches past the setback line, which would put us at five feet one and one-half inch instead of seven feet six inches for a setback. Being an architect, I prefer not to angle the geometry and the shape of the architecture. And we are here requesting that we be granted that variance based on the shape of the lot, based on the undersized lot that was the condition that my clients bought it in. And if it were 9,000 square feet, we might not have this issue. Any questions?
Do we have an elevation rendering?
We do. Should be in your packet.
It is in the packet. I did not include it in the presentation.
I can hand this up to you. It's a --
Take a look, man.
Let me stop, things are falling.
Thank you for keeping the 5.125 on the right side there. That's going to allow fire safety and everything else to occur correctly.
Do we have any further questions for the applicant? Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Just for record-keeping purposes, do you know what page of the submitted plans that is, just so we can include it in the record?
I believe there were three pages. The site plan, the floor plan, and then the third page was the --
Does it have a number on that sheet there, Anthony?
Oh, there is.
I don't think so.
Not.
Would you mind putting it to the overhead projector? We could do that.
I assume it might be the first page.
It looks like the first page. I'm scrolling through the plans that are in the upload, and it looks like the first page of it.
If you could put it on the upside, we might be able to see them put that in the record just as a snap.
Could you slide it up just a little so we can get the information on the bottom? Just a little bit more. All right, perfect. Thank you.
I can open it to this move?
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
We'll go ahead and, are there any comments and questions for the board? We're good there. We'll open it up for public comment.
Good evening. Dennis Bear, 109 South Sixth Street, Flagler Beach. I represent some of the neighbors to this property. You've already heard the one variance for this neighborhood tonight. I represent George Benoit and some of the other folks that live in that area. I don't think that this application meets the requirements for a variance. If you look at the application package itself, first off, the D that you see in the package, they bought this property in 2006, residential structure on it. They're not being deprived any reasonable use of the property by not getting a variance for what they're requesting tonight. You know, if, as we've heard from my friend, Mr. Pizzuli, if you're going to automatically grant a variance for every parallelogram lot that's in the area of A1A, then you're going to be granting variances right and left all the time. And I don't think that's appropriate. If you look at the requirements, it states that a variance granted shall be the minimum variance necessary to alleviate the hardship. For purpose of this section, an unnecessary hardship shall mean that without the granting of the variance, the owner shall be deprived of all reasonable use of the property as allowed in the zoning district. That's straight out of Section 3.07.03E of the Flagler County Land Development Code that defines unnecessary hardship as depriving all reasonable use of the property. He wants a bigger bedroom for grandkids. I don't, you know, with all due respect, I don't think that qualifies as an unnecessary hardship. If you look at the case law that the Fifth District Court of Appeals and the Florida Supreme Court has had, for it to be an unnecessary hardship, the courts have said that it must be virtually impossible to use the land for a purpose for which it is owned. That's not happening here. It's allowed for residential use. They've had it for residential use. They've got it declared as their homestead properties. So I really don't see, with all due respect, that there's hardship here. You've seen the letters from some of the neighbors that are in the packet. It's going to further obstruct the view. There's already a stair that's in the side yard setback that's obstructing the view. There's litigation underway on the other side of the property line for not removing palm trees that are blocking access of the neighbors to the beach that's, you know, as you've seen, that four-foot walkway now has a palm tree in the middle of it, after they removed some of the rocks that they had placed there to block it. So I think that under the circumstances of this case, the owners haven't acted in good faith. It's not a necessary requirement they have this. They could have a smaller encroachment. They could have a smaller bedroom, and it would still have reasonable residential use of the property. So we would request that you deny the variance. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further public comment? The applicant would like to come back up for the rebuttal. Let's just wait for the public comment and then.
Raymond Royer, 3 Pelican Lane, Painters Hill. I'm very familiar with that property. I understand the litigation's going on. But again, you heard the gentleman talk about earlier. This is an undersized property. These restrictions are on a 9,000 and above property, so it presents hardship. I know you gentlemen sometimes don't want to hear that. That's why there's a bill on the floor that was approved for the 180 bill that passed, because people are tired of boards like you restricting people to make improvements on their properties. It's gonna, that bill is gonna hinder you guys. It's actually, the way I understand the bill is actually retrofitted to go back a couple of years back. It's going to restrict some of the laws that these guys set forward. It also restricts that litigation that he talked about, the Supreme Court. It's gonna hinder, you used to have the ability to make these setback rulings so restricted. I understand there is the setbacks. You have to have some kind of setbacks. But when you have a setback that's declaring it's a 9,000 above property, and then you have an undersized property, it's a hardship, okay? Period. Granted, he's 1,200 square feet bigger than me, but still, if you look at the projection of that, it's going to be a small portion of the property that he's asking for a variance. So you heard the attorney just talk, that he can add a smaller bedroom, I guess. But come on. I mean, he's trying to make the best use of his property. And, you know, we all pay these taxes. Now, what are we paying taxes for when we have to go and fire these boards, and then here you tell we have these restrictions? You know, that's why there's this outcry. He's telling me, got to open your eyes and ears. Again, I don't see no hardship that's going to be on the neighbors and part of that development. I understand the litigation issue, but that's outside the realm of his improvements. And to bring that up in this discussion, it sounds like it's going to be more of addictive situation than actually approving something to improve your property. That's what it sounds like to me. So that's about all I have to say, because I walked that. I walked from Pelican Lane one mile north, and I walked one mile -- I walk from Pelican Lane, one mile north, and I walk one mile south every day. And I get to see the improvements. And there's a lot of large homes on that property that aren't even bigger than what he's trying to do. Now, fortunately, there are lots, but they did get some nice variances to build some big, massive homes on there. I mean, the one that's right directly across from our road is close to a $3 million home now. So, and it's looking beautiful. So, thank you.
Thank you. Any further public comment before the applicant comes up? Seeing that there's none, we'll close public comment. If the applicant would like to come up.
Joseph Pizzuli, Architect, representing Ken and Lori Ashton. I believe in your packet you have the two letters that were submitted, and quite honestly, I do not think that these letters should have any bearing on the request for this variance. It's a separate item. The objection has nothing to do with the requested variance. The objection relates to an easement on the other side of the property. So, you know, this lawsuit, and it hasn't been served yet either, from my understanding. Honestly, the sole issue is the consideration whether or not the Ashtons have, you know, if we approve that, the entitlement, the request for the variance. I don't understand... This easement or this access to the beach has some palm trees, and the palm trees are on the property line, and I think they're called boundary trees. And they're not limiting the access to the property. I have a picture here that perhaps you might want to see. And I'll hand it to you, or put it under here. Should I put it under?
Go ahead and put it under there.
We're looking at the north line on the subject property. Is that correct?
So, yeah, the property, here's the access, and it's a four-foot walkway. And here are the boundary trees that are on, that are saying, there's, I believe...
Can you speak into the microphone, please?
Oh, yeah. So, they're saying that the trees are in the middle of the walkway, and that's not true. They're closer to the property line, and perhaps maybe 10 inches of the trunk are into the four-foot walkway. So they're considered boundary trees. And there's a sign there that says, "No trespassing," and that was put up by the landowners that live on the other side of the street. Everyone owns 1/17th of this property, including the Ashtons. Some people have two lots, so they have two 1/17ths, right? So they have two 1/17ths of the property. I don't understand why this, if Dennis Baer wasn't hired for this litigation, this shouldn't have any issue bearing on a variance request. And that's my point.
This is the north property line. We're talking about the south.
That's the north property line.
Correct.
Southwest corner. Yeah, so I don't see why it's even an issue. That's a separate, separate private thing that's going on through... And it was said there might be some bad feelings and some vindictive thoughts going on here, but that doesn't have anything to do with why I'm here and why I'm requesting the variance. So, again, if Mr. Baer wasn't hired by these neighborhood people, he wouldn't have gotten up here and spoke against this variance request. And I understand everybody needs to have a job, and clients, so... But I would like to think that you are all in agreement that this should have nothing to do with my request.
Thank you.
Mr. Pizzuli, can you put the sketch back up on the overhead?
That one you... Tim?
Yeah. If you brought that southern wall, south wall, in two and a half feet to get behind the setback line, would you have a usable bedroom there?
Well, I have to be in front of the...
What would the dimensions of a bedroom there be if that wall was two and a half feet to the north?
Two and a half feet narrower, it would be 10 feet, 11 and a half inches. 10 feet. Do the math, Pizzuli.
10 by...
Those are outside the limits.
Well, 10 by, to the old line, would be 10 by 11.
Okay. So is that big enough for a bedroom?
A small bedroom.
Are they, is that internal or is that the external dimensions on the walls?
Excuse me?
Is that the internal dimension of the bedroom or the external?
That'd be the internal dimensions, yeah. I don't really like designing anything 10 feet anymore myself, but it'd be an undersized bedroom these days. Any other questions?
No, I don't. I think if they took that, I mean, symmetrically, though, it wouldn't look, it wouldn't look that appealing, you know? You'd almost have to take another two feet off the other side to make it...
I don't disagree with the notion that lining up with the corner of the house is aesthetically pleasing, but I'm not sure that that meets our criteria for the minimum that we should approve to allow the structure. So I'm not sure why we need to give them that two and a half feet when they can build a, an addition that has a bedroom in it. I mean, 10 by 11-foot bedroom, okay, it is a big bedroom, but it's probably the size of most bedrooms in this community.
Thank you.
Okay.
Any board discussion?
I'm sorry, one more quick question. This extension, it's making the two current bedrooms bigger. Is that correct?
No.
Okay, thank you.
It's adding two bedrooms.
It's, you're adding...
Are you adding or are you increasing the size of the two bedrooms that are in there?
It says new bedroom, but it's an addition, so it's increasing the size, but we needed to add another bathroom, so...
Okay, thank you.
In fact, if you look at this planned design here, or planned view of the design here, you see that the bedroom that's not encroaching is smaller still. And if you brought that offending wall in, the two and a half feet, you'd roughly have two bedrooms the same size. I don't know what the hardship is here. Other than the aesthetics.
And I think, I think it looks like they're trying to match the outside wall. Extend the outside wall up.
I make a motion...
I can make a motion. Are we good to make?
Yeah.
Okay, I'm gonna make a motion that we deny the variance request for Project 2025060069. That's the correct one, right?
Second. Do you have a motion? Do you have a second? Do you have a second? Secretary?
Roll call. Ron Long?
No.
Dan Wilcox?
Ask me later.
Timothy Connor?
Wait, I'm sorry. Let me confirm. Me saying no is saying that...
So the motion is to deny?
So I need to vote for that. So aye. I'm sorry. I'm voting aye for the motion.
Thank you.
So we're voting to deny this motion?
The motion on the floor is to deny.
Correct.
Aye.
Timothy Connor?
Aye.
Anthony Lombardo?
So we're voting to deny. I'm in favor of it, so nay. Right.
The motion does carry. The application is denied.
Motion carries. Application denied. To the next one.
So these here do, these are legislative. They do not require disclosure of any ex parte communication. This is a request to amend noise regulations. And I see Adam shuffling coming over to the front. Thank you very much, Adam.
Thank you, Chair. Adam Engel, Growth Management Director. Just have a couple of slides here to, actually, there's only the single slide. And so the reason why we're doing this, and you may have seen it in the staff report, is that we've had a request from a historic church. They're replacing their bell and want to go with an electronic bell. And one of the points they asked us is, what will this look like in relation to our noise regulations? And so we have a sound level of 70 dB A measured at the property line that, as it's written presently, applies to particularly churches and schools, or the ones that I'm seeing as problematic here. And it's very likely that that noise level would be exceeded at some point. Parcel's small. It's in the hammock. The intent, as I've heard it from the church, is to use it for Christmas songs, for the timing of time as the bell currently rings and marks the hour, I believe during daylight hours. And so that's the intent of having this replacement electronic bell. And then I started also thinking then, well, what about our ordinary emergency need that we may have? Where if some of us remember that you used to have the air horn that would, and there's an exemption that's in there for emergency purposes, I believe it's already written in there, that gives us the exemption, but better here for us to consider the applicability of a public, semi-public, and special use exemption. And so this would apply to those new designated public, semi-public, special uses, those being churches, houses of worship, which we consider semi-public uses. Public uses, which had been, all of our schools had been approved as public uses. And then also state the obvious, all of our schools, with the exception of Benell Elementary, that's in the city of Benell, are all in the city of Palm Coast now. They've all been annexed, and they were part of the Palm Coast Service District before the formation of the city. But each of those had not had, this brings up the other point, the public lands institutional zoning put in place. And so then the other thing this ordinance accomplishes is gets rid of that, what I believe is an archaic term, the public lands institutional, which we never really did. And so we may yet have something that would cover our public lands, our designated government uses, but right now we don't have a land use or zoning category that particularly does that, because everything we have, our parks, are all public uses. An example of a special use, just because I did get the inquiry, somebody asked me, is this a special event? No, special event is a term of art in Land Development Code. Special use is a term of art. These are two different things. Special events actually are what prompted our noise regulations, if you recall, when we first had them implemented here in Flagler County. They were tied up with activities related to Bike Week that happened at the White Eagle and also at Bilo Plantation. And so that's where the genesis of the noise regulations first came from. And this would then be guided towards special uses, special uses primarily being, for us, utilities. And so I don't expect those to be noise generators. But I did have the intent that if somebody did intend to have a school located within unincorporated Flagler County, which we don't have right now, even a charter school, that they'd be able to take advantage of this as well, this exemption. And as an example, I'm not sure if you all have heard it, but there are winter mornings when I can clearly hear the announcements at the schools nearby. And so that, you know, I can hear that, and I'm some four miles away from those, and I can hear them with clarity, where I can tell what the morning announcements are. I can hear the bell schedule, so that that just as an example, you know, I think this is needed. And so with that, staff is recommending that the Planning and Development Board recommend to the Board of County Commissioners adoption of this amendment that will exempt public, semi-public, and special uses from the requirements of the noise regulations. That'll close. Wait any questions or comments? Staff report's pretty brief on this. The ordinance, I can answer hopefully questions on either one of those that may arise. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Adam. Does the board have any comments or questions for staff?
Question. Where are we gonna find, well, specifically, parks that like to rent out their venues for all-night parties? Is that going to be exempt from noise ordinance also?
The park, my intent with this is that new parks that we'd have would be exempt, but then special events that go with them would not be. So special events would still have conditions placed on them. And then if there's anything, you know, even a new church, if we wanted to regulate the noise emanating from those, we could set a separate decibel level. We could also set separate hours for any of those, any of those activities.
It's been, it's been brought to my experience by a number of different uses and adjacent owners that the noise level generated by some of the uses for all-night parties, that some of our venues that supposedly close at 10 o'clock goes quiet on into the night and quite loud with a lot of bass and noise. And I'm just bringing it up, asking that question.
I was trying to remember before this, you know, the examples. We have audio, we have an audio system at Wadsworth, which is in the city of Flagler Beach. Fairgrounds, Benell? I can't remember if that's, I don't think it's annexed in, but the fairgrounds may be the only place where this probably kicks in, at least to the level you're discussing. Most of our other, okay, Princess Place Unincorporated, there are not many. A lot of our parks are, we start heading out on 100, we've got, or out to Dead Lake, something like that. We've got, you know, those falling into our jurisdiction, but in fact, most of the, most of the parks are in one of the cities. Also, Varn Park, that's unincorporated.
Do we, do we have a way to measure and enforce this?
We do. I don't know if enforcement's been, been...
That's, that's the only, like, earlier it was brought up about a stop sign that didn't exist. Somebody runs a stop sign. My experience is, as an engineer, I have to go out and validate the legality of signs to the sheriff. And literally been brought before as expert witness that that stop sign does not meet the height, size, and reflectivity requirements, therefore, it's not a stop sign. But the question I'm asking you is just, are we gonna be able to defend what we're putting forward?
I think, I think we can, and I'll also attest to you that I believe the noise regulations at this point are, I know they are enforced by the sheriff's office, and I believe the sheriff's office at this point is using a reasonable objectionable criteria, where I do know there are a few decibel meters that are present, but I think what they're also doing is kind of the knock and talk and warning. And so that more of what they're looking for, if there is an instance of, in a residential area, of someone exceeding the noise requirements, they're wanting the music to stop. They're wanting the loud activity to stop. And so, you know, the short answer for you, I believe we can enforce this.
Okay. Just, just a question.
Any other questions for staff? Do we go ahead and call, so you're kind of the applicant, right? Or there's no applicant to call up, so public comment, right?
Yes.
Anyone like to come up for public comment? Being there, there's no public comment, we will close public comment. Does the board have any further discussion? And I guess we could ask for a motion, right? To recommend?
Chair, I make a motion that we approve the request to amend the noise regulations.
Second.
All right, we have a motion as second. The secretary?
Ron Long?
Yes.
Dan Wilcox?
No.
Timothy Connor?
Yes.
Anthony Lombardo?
Yes.
The motion does carry.
Application, final application, number 10. This is legislative, not requiring disclosure of any ex parte communication. This is a request to amend subdivision regulations. Staff?
Yes, sir. Yeah, this one's maybe a little bit more critical, that this one was linked to a legislative, legislation that just came through and took effect July 1. And so we have Senate Bill 784, Committee Substitute for Committee Substitute for Committee Substitute for Senate Bill Number 784, that made plat approvals... for Senate Bill Number 784, that made plat approvals an administrative act and took away those plat reviews and plat approvals from the governing bodies of the state. And so we had in our Article 4 in the Land Development Code, in my opinion, more than I thought, references to board approval, board review. I went through and I parsed those. I feel pretty good about what I put together, even though it was under a bit of a deadline, bit of duress to kind of pound it out, had very capable legal review. Sarah picked up quite a few things that I had missed. But the, I'll emphasize here is that I think this, what we're presenting to you with this ordinance meets the requirements. It is not perfect. It needs to be part, I believe, still of a comprehensive update to the Land Development Code that now, because of a different Senate bill that took effect, is gonna be holding off in the future for some time. Maybe we'll be fixing the next legislative session. But that's the one that you may have heard of, Senate Bill 180, that prevents us from adopting that which is more burdensome on development. And so that's tying up right now some of our comprehensive plan work. It's also gonna tie up definitely the Land Development Code update until that's resolved. This is not under so much of a churn and discussion and kind of contention. Senate Bill 784 seems pretty clear. Seems like something that makes a lot of sense. And what the driving force with the legislature was is take that which is administrative primarily and make it where it stays administrative, where it's not something that comes into the subjective purview of a governing body, then effectively affected by the clamor of the crowd, if you will. And so this then, as we've had happen in our recent experience, we present these. We presented to the boards that it meets all of the administrative requirements, and then have the board still coming back. Maybe in quite a few cases, the why starts coming out of what exactly is our role here with this. And you've likely had it, at least for the preliminary plats, that you've had review. Final plats being those that are restricted only to the Board of County Commissioners for approval according to our Land Development Code. For the record, waivers of subdivision requirements are still retained by the Board of County Commissioners. You're still gonna take waivers there, so that that's something, when I looked at it, effectively variances to the subdivision regulations still have to go to the Board of County Commissioners. That's something that I believe the legislation did not carve out, did not make it where it's an administrative role there. So as an example, if somebody exceeds a 1,320-foot-long cul-de-sac, that's our limit in our Land Development Code for a single cul-de-sac without having an extra intervening street. They'd still have to go to the board then and get a specific waiver to allow that cul-de-sac to exceed 1,320 linear feet in its length. And with that, I'll provide staff's recommendation with this, is that the Planning and Development Board recommend approval to the Board of County Commissioners of the ordinance amending the subdivision regulations to comply with Senate Bill 784. With that, Chair, I'll wait any questions or comments and submit the report and the ordinance for the record. Thank you.
Thank you. Any questions from the board to staff?
I have some. Are we gonna have to go through, is there more ordinances and regulations we're gonna have to go through to carve these little pieces out for this 784? Or does this kind of cover everything? I looked through the regulations you had, and I saw where that section was taken out, and a few other line items were marked through. But are we gonna have to see this on a whole bunch more stuff, or does this cover all of it?
784 was limited mainly to subdivisions, and so I think we were pretty comprehensive in tackling all these in Article 4. And so the good thing about our code, while we may say bad things about it, and, you know, no definition of fences, and all, it's lions and tigers and bears, that's the most horrible thing ever. But Article 4 was where we had all of our subdivision regs within that article. And so it was fairly easy to go through and amend the sections. One other thing I need to make sure I mention, and you may have picked up on it, we eliminated the sketch plat because nobody's really doing it. And so one of the other things we did was just take that out because it's been something that, you know, and when you look at it, you can take the sketch plat as far as you want to take it, but what does it do? It gives you a warm, fuzzy feeling about what you could eventually get platted. That doesn't make sense now for you to have that, because if the plats are subject to administrative approval, you don't need that. And so that's why another thing we did. But back to your question, this should be the totality of the amendments that we'll need for 784.
All right, thank you.
How far does this go, Adam? Is this gonna eliminate public purview of site planning?
Good thing, and I did, good question. I did leave that in there also, is that, and I attempted to make that distinction, that PUD site development plans and site development plans for other development, mainly those are gonna be your multifamily and probably commercial developments. BJ's site plan would still come in for site plan review, review and recommendation by Planning Board, and then ultimate approval by the Board of County Commissioners. Depending on the threshold, let me fix that. Site plans greater than five acres are the ones that are unique for Planning Board. You can approve those. PUD site plans would be the recommendation of the Planning Board, then the overall approval of the Board of County Commissioners.
So zoning approvals are still gonna be coming before us and the county commission?
Yes, sir.
I thought as this was winding through the legislature, that it was directed at the final plat approval, where that just becomes a ministerial act and seems like a staff-level decision, but that's not true. 784 went and touched all plating, including the preliminary plat process.
That's my opinion. I think we're in concurrence as staff, that that is what has happened with this. I would admit that 784 was not specific and did not make a distinction between preliminary and final. But I think if I'm reading the plain text of the statute and the change that has occurred correctly, that's why I believe it's preliminary and final both.
Isn't that going to make the zoning requests that come before us more difficult for us to do if the applicant doesn't have a plan for the property, like that one in the hammock that we considered recently, where they say, well, rezone me to something great, and I'm not gonna do anything bad? And that was all we could get out of them at the time. And if we don't have the way to then follow up and say, all right, well, when you come back to us for the site plan or the plat, we're gonna scrutinize what you really want to do. We'll give you the zoning change now, but we can't do that anymore.
I don't think that's changed that one, at least that specific one. We're thinking of the, I won't name the applicant, but the corners that we had that were involved on the west side of A1A and the Artesia subdivision. That's probably enough for me to say there. So that those, the bitter pill for y'all to have then was that it was a request for straight zoning, too small for a PUD, and then you would not see the site plan because the site plans would have went only to Technical Review Committee. And so that, you know, that's still there. That hasn't been affected.
How are we gonna do that?
It's maybe something to address in the Land Development Code when we get a chance to update it. But for the moment, 784 has not affected that.
Okay. I think we have to comply with state laws, so I would move to recommend this to the county commission.
Do we have to open this to public comment?
I think so, yes, sir.
I'm gonna go ahead and open this application to public comment. Anyone like to come up? Please come up now. We will go ahead and close public comment and go for the motion. Second.
Reassert my motion to recommend this to the county commission, that we bring our code in compliance with state law.
Second. All right, we have a motion. We have a second. The secretary?
Ron Long?
Aye.
Dan Wilcox?
Aye.
Timothy Connor?
Aye.
Anthony Lombardo?
Aye.
The motion carried unanimously.
Thank you. Staff comments?
Oh, yeah, we probably should mention to you, I kind of hinted at it just now. Our comp plan was transmitted, and we did receive the comment back from State Department of Commerce that the comp plan transmittal was not accepted because on its face, the Senate Bill 180 lists text in Section 28 of Senate Bill 180, if somebody wants to go and read it home, that any proposed or adopted amendment to a comprehensive plan, including and Land Development Code regulations, and, 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 there's quite a list there, cannot be done by a local government that was affected by the string of hurricanes that are listed in Senate Bill 180. That's what we're doing now. We have, at some hand-wringing on our part, we've withdrawn the transmittal to the State Department of Commerce. We are working with the Department of Commerce staff over the next, I'd probably say, two to four weeks to create a list of policy texts from the transmitted comp plan that need to be removed from the plan, that in our opinion reflects more burdensome regulation. And then what we intend to do is put that back in front of the, likely in front of the Planning Board and the Board of County Commissioners, so y'all can see what we've done, and then go back through transmittal again. And so that's a bit of a bitter pill for me to swallow. I think those who are watching at home and those of us who are in the business know that Department of Commerce really doesn't have this in their bailiwick. Their review is supposed to be, how does a comprehensive plan or comprehensive plan update represent consistency with the state comprehensive plan? But the read from Department of Commerce staff is correct that effectively the law preempts us from adopting or proposing for adoption anything that is viewed as more burdensome. So the idea is that the legal requirement of the statute at this point made it where we could not legally propose for adoption the transmittal, even transmit to Department of Commerce. My take was, send it, we'll edit it, we'll fix it. We could still potentially do that. In the end, we're gonna do something similar to that in working in conjunction with Department of Commerce staff. So, no, it's a little confusing of what I'm mentioning there, but everything's time. Just gonna take a little bit more time. We'll get it done. And then hopefully the legislature will go back next session and fix all the things that were done in Senate Bill 180, the unintended consequences.
We hope. Has Flagler County considered joining the judicial challenge to SB 180?
We have, and I don't want to steal anyone's thunder, and maybe Sarah can jump in. One of the things we talked about is the potential ramifications, and you always have to look at the political factor. You know, do you want to make your local legislative delegation mad at you? And so if you go and you join this group, effectively, you're going against the state, you're going against the legislatures, legislators, and is that really something you want to pursue? And so that may yet be an outcome, that may be something we'll present to the Board of County Commissioners. I think so far, we've been kind of, at least initially, saying that that's probably not really gonna get us that much of a good outcome for us.
Is there a lobby delegation that's been put together to help work on the fix for next legislative session?
I can say that the Florida Association of Counties is working on a fix.
Okay.
The letter that was sent up, what is the turnaround, what's the hope for that letter of doing anything? I know Sean sent me a copy of it, and I read through it. It's promising, but what's the likelihood?
That is what was sent to the Florida Association of Counties.
Yeah.
And I know that they're very, we've seen lots of communication on this. And everyone that I've seen so far, all of the communications were in support of drafting something, so...
And with that, so is it worth it for us to redo the comp plan, like you're saying, Adam, and do all those and send it back to them? If it could very well be possible that coming up in maybe six or eight months, a lot of changes happen again?
We could shelve it. You know, we could take it just as it is and kind of put it off to the side and then just wait.
Nothing's gonna happen with it anyway as it is, right?
We could do that. We could opt to do that. And then my hope was, and you know, this is a fleeting dream of Adam's, that somehow the governor, whoever, would come back and say, this demands a special session of the legislature. That's not happening.
Yeah, that'd be nice.
You know, but...
No, that only has to do with ad valorem taxes. That's when we get special.
Right, exactly. Yes, and the, yes.
Okay. I have nothing else, then, yeah.
Board comments? None? Public comments? Any public comment not pertaining to anything on the agenda tonight? You will have three minutes.
Raymond Royer, Three Pelican Lane, Flagler Beach. Yeah, on the 180 that you discussed, I talked to the board on it, when they brought it up. And I asked them to research it, and you gentlemen should do the same. This has gotten fire because places like Tampa and the hurricane devastated areas were under, not only not getting insurance payments, but scrutiny to rebuild with all these new guidelines. They weren't allowed to grandfather. So it just added, I have a good friend that I went to school with that is finally building after two years. And it was because insurance not paying and the litigation with trying to get a house built. She would have built on the new guidelines. She basically would have been building a spike home. And we all know what a spike home looks like. I mean, it's what it says. It's a spike home. But nobody wants to build a spike home. You don't even get a decent square bedroom out of it. So that's where the fire is coming from. And again, the citizens in those locations went to their legislators, and you can imagine the fire behind those people. I mean, they're frustrated. They don't have no home. And that's where the bill's coming from. So I wish these guys would just slow down just a little bit and understand where that bill's coming from. Again, I appreciate you guys doing the work you do because it's hard. And you heard me talk about me trying to do our roadways at our neighborhood. That's a whole other personal issue, but it's, you know, you got different people with their different opinions. And the only thing I'm trying to do is I do not want to repeat a bad roadway. And we're gonna move forward, and we're gonna do it kind of minimum by the county codes, even though we don't have to follow the county. And we're gonna try to do the proper runoff with water and take care of the requirements of... I'm waiting for the water management company, politics to get back to me. That's what I'm waiting for right now, and that's like pulling teeth too. But lucky for us, we have a neighbor that's moved in. He's actually a civil engineer. I've talked to him. So that was a plus. I mean, talking about getting good energy. I mean, just talking to him and letting him know what we'd like to see. He said he can easily draw up a plan and get us moving. And actually, he has all the contacts with those government agencies because he deals with them all the time. So, thank you for your time, and I'll see you next month.
Any other public comment? Being there's no more public comment, we will make a motion for adjournment.
Don't move.
Second. Ms. Secretary?
Do we need a roll call vote?
No.
Who was the motion to adjourn? Sorry.
I think the motion was...
Motion.
Thank you.